All right. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council. And we are returning from closed session with no reportable action.
I can't hear you.
Can you speak? How about now?
No.
It's lighting up. How about now? I know. I mean, it's getting input, I don't... Do you know anything about it? I don't know anything about it. Can you turn it on? Can you guys hear me? Barely, barely.
Hello? Okay, you got that good?
Is it mine? I've had nothing. In it? Can you hear me in the back?
No.
You want to sit here?
I don't know, there are... That's saying...
Good evening.
All right, hopefully we'll figure this out. Welcome to the Lakeport City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 19th. We are returning from closed session with no reportable action. And roll call. Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Farland?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Matina?
Here.
Pledge allegiance. Doug, would you please...
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, is there... What do you guys want to do? No, but... Something. How about...
Hillary's works.
Hillary's works, look at your hers.
This is a read? Okay. Is that...
Is it on there?
Can you hear me? Yeah. I don't, I don't think it's working.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's working.
Okay. Okay. I know. I'm gonna have to hold it. Okay, where were we? So, if you're joining us tonight for signing them on the agenda, please wait for that item to be called. If you'd like to speak to us about something else not on the agenda, there's some citizen input forms at the back that you can fill out and bring up. Okay, we have acceptance of the agenda. Is there anything needed to be added or deleted? Not, we'll take a motion?
Madam Mayor, if there's something else, I'd move for acceptance of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration as this meeting for either introduction or passage. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of November 21st and a special meeting of December 4th. Approve the warrant registers of December 7th. Approve application 2018-002 with staff recommendations for the Shakespeare at the Lake production, as you like it, on July 28th and 29th, 2018. Direct the city clerk to prepare the 2018 Mattie Act appointment list and post at City Hall and the Lakeport Public Library. And authorize the city manager to sign contract change orders number 1 to number 7 with granted construction companies for the additional work on the Lake Shore Boulevard ER project. Anyone want to pull anything to discuss? Anyone from the public? Not, we'll take a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to public presentation. Do we have any citizen input tonight, Hillarys? Okay, Ruby Jones.
Good evening.
Hi, Ruby.
Hi. I have three things to do with the street. First, I'd like to ask about the street sweeper. As of today, the 1100 block of North High Street has not been swept. I have called this Public Works at three times, and it seems like the driver is always pulled off for something else and not available. Last Wednesday, he did 11th Street for the first time this fall. He came up High Street to 11th and churned. We have senior citizens on our block. We've done the best we can to keep the street clean of the leaves because the rains are coming. What do we have to do to get the street sweeper to come down our street? The papers said they would be there weekly.
Let's do your other couple items, and then we'll have Doug answer your question.
Okay. I asked the Public Works about doing something about the cracks on our one-way street, and I was told that they have other streets that are in a lot worse condition than ours. It's a one-block, it's a one-way street, and we have a lot of traffic on it, and all of the trucks that are going out to Lake Shore with the rocks and the gravel are going down it, and it's getting cracks in it. And we wanted them to come out and, I don't know, seal it or put oil in it. She said they would take, she would take a note and put it on the boss's desk. And then the other item is the striping on 11th Street. I don't remember the last time it was done. And when you come off of the freeway at nighttime in front of the post office, if you're not from Lakeport, and even if you are, you don't know where to drive because you can't see anything. I had talked to the city some time back, and they said that there was no approved paint for doing striping. And I drove down 20th Street the other night, and I don't know what unapproved paint they used to do the striping over there, but it looks really nice. 11th Street is one of two main entrances in Lakeport. We watch people drive down the turn lane because they don't know where to drive.
Yeah. That thing takes so quickly. So Doug, can you touch on those real quick?
Yeah, I can. I just need to get together with you because I am unaware of the street sweeper not completing their assigned route. We have a posted route that the sweeper sweeps every week now, being that we're in the leaf season. So, I'm gonna get together with you as soon as you leave the podium and get your contact information, and me and you will get together.
Okay.
And we'll get that ironed out. As far as the cracks in the road, unfortunately, there is not a, just a quick fix to fix a crack in the road.
Okay.
But I will be more than glad to come out and look at them with you.
Okay.
And I can tell you what we could possibly be able to do in the future.
Well, the city resurfaced it a few years back, and it's starting to deteriorate, and it is a heavily used block.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't have the money to come in and mill these streets down two or three inches and put two or three inches back. So, what we do typically to try to keep our residents driving on something that resembles pavement is we do typically a one-inch overlay, and that has anywhere from a five to 15-year life, depending on the volume.
I think that's what was done several years ago, and now it's cracking.
Right. And so, I'll come out and look at that, look at the cracks with you, and we'll see, you know, what kind of remedies that we might have for that. As far as the striping, to my knowledge, I've never said there was no...
It was somebody here at City Hall.
Oh, okay. What I can tell you is the paints that are available to us as paints are water-based. They're basically a latex paint, and they have a lifespan of three to six months. What we've done is we have gone to the state, and we have got a grant to put down thermoplasty on all of our main arterials and collectors and the reflectorized buttons. That project is in the design process right now. We have funding to do the design, and as soon as we get that completed, which will be within the next probably 30 to 60 days, we'll submit that to Caltrans, and we'll get authorization for the construction project. And that will be done with an outside contractor who will come in and put down a different material, which we're unable to put down ourselves, which is called thermoplasty. And it is a plastic product. Because we are very cognizant of how bad the stripes could go. And unfortunately, with the products that we have available to us because of environmental regulations, they just don't last.
What about the botched dots that are missing? Can they be replaced?
Those are gonna be replaced with no more bot dots. We're going strictly with the reflective. The bot dot is a ceramic non-reflective dot, which we have a lot of those on our streets that give you the bump, but they don't give you the bright reflectivity. We're going with all reflectorized buttons, and those will all be put down within the striping project itself.
And when, when do you think that would be?
Well, we're hoping, depending on the weather, sometime late this, well, it'd be early this spring. So, and we, it's over a $500,000 award grant that we got to do that striping.
Not just on 11th Street?
Not just 11th. It's gonna be all of our main streets and our main collectors. So that includes Lakeport Boulevard, will include High Street, Lake Shore, and a lot of downtown Main Street.
I hope they repair the cracks before they waste the money on the pay.
No, unfortunately, that's not gonna happen in all the areas. We have a choice. We're never gonna get all the cracks fixed. There's just not enough money. So, we had an option that we were looking at. Do we do, try to limp by with just three months' worth of striping a year, or do we just say, you know what, we have to be realistic. The striping is more important than trying to wait until, hopefully, we get a windfall of cash and we're able to do, you know, road repairs.
Especially older people feel that it's really dangerous coming off the freeway at night there because you can't tell where the lane traffic is.
11th Street is an issue, and I agree with that.
Now, your Public Works?
Public Works, and my name is Doug.
The lady that answers your phone cannot be nicer, and I don't envy her at all. And I know she gets a lot of phone calls about the lack of street sweeping.
Right. So, I'm gonna meet you in the back, and I'm gonna get your phone number, and then me and you are gonna get together, will be right after the first of the year.
Okay. The streets will still be there. I hope the leaves are gone.
The leaves will be gone.
And Doug, I have Ruby's information right here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll give you that.
Perfect. I will give you her contact information, and I will be contacting you very soon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have one more citizen input form from Annette, but this is an agenda item. Do you want to wait for the agenda item to come up? Yeah. Rather than, you want to wait for that item?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Do we have any other citizen input before we move on? Okay.
I'd just like to add one thing to comments from Ruby. All of the council members here are pretty young, and some of the people on the council are pretty young. Those of us that are, you know, getting up in our 50s and 60s and beyond, that dealt with cataracts and things like that, and it is really incomprehensible for young people to understand how difficult it is to see when road repairs go on, and they don't get the fog lines in, and the center divider line is not right. It is a very dangerous situation. The lights hit you in the eye, and so I, I've dealt with that before, and I tell you, it is really scary, and I think that those of you that are young, don't take it as seriously as you need to because it could be, I mean, especially like 11th Street where we have a left turn lane, people are going into the post office, going into the safety, I'm going into my driveway, and it could be a very dangerous situation if you don't know the terrain. So Ruby, thank you for bringing that to our attention, but we are working on that. But those of you that are young, let me tell you, when you have advanced vision, the road, lights, and all those things, Doug, I think you can relate, here's a very important thing to maintain public safety. I got it fixed, I'm just telling you.
Okay. Next, we have the Lakeport Main Street Association with presentation of the winners for the 2017 Holiday Decoration Contest. Woo, Annette, are you out there? Barbara?
Can't hear you.
Can you talk a little louder, please?
I'm sorry, I really have yelling up here. Can you hear me?
Now.
Now.
I'm too young to rub from a made-in-to-day. I mean, too old. Did I say too young? Happy holidays, Merry Christmas from Main Street to all of you. And thank you for your help with this, and for the people that helped go around and help choose these because it's very difficult. So, thank you so much. Gondam? Okay, third place, Gondam, Carla, on 301 South Forbes Street. Residential, I'm sorry, not Jewish. Is she here?
Yeah, it's Kayla.
Kayla, I'm sorry, Kayla.
It's okay.
I apologize. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
What was the address again?
301...
South Forbes?
South Forbes Street. Yes, 301, I'm sorry, I thought it was...
You did, I just didn't catch it.
No, I didn't give her answers. Okay, Rob in Lynette, Albergeli? And 2471 Parallel Drive in Lakeport City. Do you get the picture or the check?
She did check.
She takes the check if you get the picture. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas. And first place, for the residential, Jeff and Jackie Hanson, 1457 20th Street, City of Lakeport. You take the money, you take the picture. Merry Christmas. And for third place, for the bis, I knew it was a business. Because it says, Main Street Bicycles. So, 125 North Main, if you didn't know. Merry Christmas. Thank you so much for participating. See, you're gonna get the chips. And second place is Renee's Cafe, 105 North Main Street. Oh, there she is.
I don't have to share because I'm all alone.
You get them both! Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and first place, for the Holiday Lighting Contest of 2017, Redwood Community Services Home Program, 390 North Forbes Street. Would you like to open the picture?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Well, that's so she can see it in the picture.
And we thank you very, very much for helping us do this. The executive director has nothing else to say, and neither do I. Merry Christmas.
Okay, next, we have Personal Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance, public hearing. Kevin?
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable councilmembers. The proposed ordinance before you is strictly related to personal cannabis cultivation and is separate from the commercial cannabis ordinance that you'll be asked to consider as a part of your next public hearing. In response to the passage of Prop 64 by the California voters last November, as well as regulations passed by the state legislature, most notably SB 94, the city is required to amend its current medicinal marijuana cultivation ordinance to permit personal cultivation consistent with Prop 64. Early on in the process, it became readily apparent that the current regulations for medical marijuana were working really well, and as a result, the Planning Commission and the working, the Cannabis Working Group recommended sort of a minimalist approach to amending the new ordinance to meet those Prop 64 requirements. The revised ordinance limits personal and medical cannabis to 80 square feet and with a maximum of six plants. It continues to prohibit outdoor cultivation, and all grows are required to take place within a secure and detached accessory structure. The Planning Commission reviews, reviewed the proposed ordinance in October and November of this year and made some minor amendments to the definition section to be consistent with state terminology, also allowing accessory structures to include greenhouses, meeting specified criteria, and the removal of setback requirements from schools, daycares, and in other areas as required by state law. All in all, the proposed ordinance represents a very minimal change to the existing ordinance regarding medicinal cannabis, other than adding in the personal cannabis regulations. That's it.
Okay. So, just to reiterate, this is personal cannabis, not commercial. We'll take that up next. Are there any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Okay, go ahead, open the public hearing. Anyone like to talk about it? Last chance? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, bring you back to council. Any comments? If not, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there are no comments, I would move to approve the proposed ordinance amending chapters 17.04, 17.05, 17.06, 17.07, and 17.38 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to permit and regulate personal cannabis cultivation within the city of Lakeport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the proposed commercial cannabis ordinance. Kevin?
I'm sure this one will go just as quick.
I'm sure.
Good evening once again, honorable to the councilmembers. Similar to the personal cultivation ordinance you just approved, this proposed ordinance is, stems directly from the California voters' approval of Prop 64, and then also legislative approval of several different regulations, most notably SB 94. Following several, so, let's see here, let me go. Although various commercial cannabis activities, the state allows various commercial cannabis activities, and that will begin January 1st, however, the state does provide that local jurisdictions can have broad control over the types of activities that they allow within their respective jurisdictions. Following several meetings with the Cannabis Working Group throughout the year, and then additionally, several public hearings before the Planning Commission, your council, your council was provided a draft ordinance to review on November 21st. Following that meeting, your council held an additional public meeting to discuss the proposed ordinance at your last meeting on December 4th. Based on the directions provided at those two meetings, staff has incorporated the recommended changes into this ordinance. These include primarily prohibiting cannabis retail with onsite consumption, adding language that prohibits cannabis related to special events, adding additional review authority for the fire department on cannabis manufacturing operations, replacing the term "dispensary" with "cannabis retailer" to be more consistent with state licensing regulations, the removal of all references to cannabis uses and replacing that instead with cannabis activities so as not to reduce, so as not to be confused with use permit requirements also outlined in the ordinance. And then amend cannabis manufacturing uses to be consistent with state licensing regulations. And lastly, removing references to testing as it relates to microbusinesses, which is also consistent with state regulations. Based on those previous council discussions, there were some other areas that staff still believes require some further clarification, most notably that relates to allowances related to retail sales, and additionally, what appropriate zoning districts for retail sales will be permitted. Following conducting this public hearing and discussion by council, staff will make any necessary changes. As previously recommended, changes were substantive in nature per government code 36934. An additional reading of this proposed ordinance will be required. So, the motion that you have in your staff report is, is false, so we'll have to continue any changes. If we do make additional substantive changes, we will also have to re-advertise and do an additional hearing as well. So that's in a nutshell.
Okay. Let's see, first, Chief, you were gonna maybe bring some more information. Did you hear back?
Yes, I do, I do have a report if you're ready for that.
Go ahead.
So, regarding our outreach on the jurisdictions, who we believe had current retail establishments, we heard back from Yukaya who advised that they actually didn't have any, any currently operating, but they did recently approve one that they don't believe yet was open, and there had been no calls related to that. We also heard back from the city of Sebastopol, who has, currently has two retail dispensaries, one which has been open since 2007, the other which is fairly recent, and they reported that neither of those, there've been no crimes reported at either of those locations. And that's the extent of the, the information we've received back. There's still, I believe, three jurisdictions who have not responded to us. So, that's the extent of that information.
Any questions from council or discussion before we open the public hearing?
Just, just, can I say that, that that's 2007, that's like 10 years, and there hasn't been any...
Well, they only, they only checked the last three-year history. So they, we asked for a three-year history on, from every jurisdiction. So, unknown prior to that, but for the last three years, nothing.
So we can assume that those dispensaries would be equal to retail with storefront, right?
I would assume so, yes. They're any, any kind of an open retail business that was open to the public.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we need a pen?
Same zones, but here in Lakeport, have been for 50-plus years. Stan, lift the microphone. Oh, is that, is that better? Oh, thank you. I have attended numerous meetings down here regarding this thing. It seems like everything that's been done, everybody feels like it has to be done by the 1st of January 19, or 2018. My understanding is that you have the option of denying or to ban any and all sales if you so desire, which is, is, the medical issue, I can, I can live with as a retired law officer. It's taken a long time for me to buy into that. I still don't buy into the, to the commercial operations as far as storefronts and whatnot in the city of Lakeport. We are not Santa Rosa, we're not Clear Lake, we're not Yukaya. If you look at Clear Lake, Clear Lake is a large area, geographically speaking, spread out over a good large area, I don't know how many miles or acres, whatever you want to call it. However, Lakeport is compacted to a small area, and I don't think we need to have that operation in our community. My, my hope is that you, as a council, would ban this with the idea of looking at it down the road. It seems like the... It seems like the state hasn't even figured out what they're going to do, because they're constantly trying to figure out what's going on, changing the rules as we go. I read an article just this morning, and it was in our local paper, that there's an estimate of at least 72% of the municipalities in the state of California that have banned all of these things, mainly because they don't feel that they've had enough time to sit down and figure this out. And every time they come up with something, the state changes their mind, or else the rules as they go along are being changed. Cultivation, obviously, we just went through with the personal use situation, and that's flying down me if you're into that. But I don't think we need the medical facilities, storefront operations. Like I said, there are facilities in Clear Lake, Ukiah, Santa Rosa. I don't know about Calistoga or Napa County area. But I'm concerned that you're trying to rush into this with dollar signs floating around because of the taxes that we're going to get from these businesses. How much are we going to get? There's never been, that I can recall, any dollar or percent figure as to what you're going to charge for permits, what kind of sales tax, or whatever taxes you're going to put on this stuff. Those are things that I think should be seriously considered. By banning it all now, you still have the option to look at it down the road when this finally gets all ironed out, the state gets all their little ducks in a row. Then you can come back in and say, well, you know, we can go along with one, or maybe two, or whatever you, as a council, decides and can justify, but just arbitrarily, I realize there's been a lot of work into this thing, but there's also some other issues that haven't been covered, to my knowledge. The black market, everybody's talking about the black market. That's here, it's been here, it's probably going to be here until we all move on to greener pastures. We may be part of what's growing some of that stuff. So I, again, ask the council to ban the sales, commercial sales, storefront sales in the city of Lakeport, with the understanding that you can go back down the road and revisit this situation and possibly come up with something that's maybe a little better when everybody knows what's going on without having to worry about it. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan.
Excited to get after our trip over.
Hey, how you doing? Good.
I'm familiar with the argument that was just made. A lot of questions coming up, how is this all going to work? City of Fresno had that stance for the past 21 years. Medical marijuana has been legal in the state of California for 21 years. Just last Thursday, after doing nothing for those 21 years, they voted to initiate a tax amendment to finally regulate medical cannabis. It was a very proud day, but I also knew in the back of my head, they're just starting a process that we here in the city have been going through fairly quickly, that the county has been at for well over a year. And just attending Tuesday's board meeting today, that the county has a fair way to go. So I just want to acknowledge that this is an important day, but it is not the one-and-done event, that if we're going to regulate cannabis, it's going to be a process. And so part of what we're doing here today is the land use and the permitting aspect of that. Certainly, the state licensing authorities have a big role to do in that, and yes, there are many unanswered questions about fees and taxes and what have you, what happens if we get the bad actors. But I'm proud of the ordinances before you today. It was done on a fairly aggressive timeline to meet a deadline that may not even be a deadline. And yet, through that hard work, and through these marathon meetings, and through these hard discussions, what you have before you today, both on personal cultivation and the commercial side, works in alliance with state law. It gives the local people the power to do what they need to do in terms of permitting and enforcement, and it represents a very clean, and I would say even elegant, start to what cannabis regulation is going to look like on a local level. On the issue of retail sales, again, don't pull your punches. If you're going to regulate cannabis, regulate cannabis sales, because I can tell you cannabis retail is already here in the city of Lakeport and in the county of Lake. The question is, are we going to have state-licensed cannabis sales? Or are we going to leave all those cannabis sales to the drug dealers that are hanging out there? And they're out there. So we will not end the black market overnight, but we can certainly take our rightful steps to diminish it and to start to defund it, and to make Lakeport stand proud among those regulating local governments that are moving forward. And then I can go back to Fresno with a straight face and say, look, you can do it. We've already done it in other places, and you can do it too. I would definitely ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Come on, Michael.
My name is Matt Hopkins. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I've written a letter to the city council that I'm going to read, and then I'll make copies available to all of you, and one for you, too. Be cautious in your decision-making. Don't be pushed, prodded, or otherwise massaged into making decisions that will have lasting and, at this time, unknown impacts. Once the go-ahead is given, it's hard to go back. Changes and adjustments can be made in the future. Currently, we are not sufficiently prepared to grant the demands that are being made on us. We do not know what to expect, and there are still a lot of unknowns. New and revised information continues to come from the state of California. For that reason alone, as well as a variety of other different reasons, many cities and counties have said no to retail sales and dispensaries. In addition to the many cannabis activities currently operating illegally and often irresponsibly in Lake County, other people have recently come here to take advantage of Lake County, because they see Lake County as a prime target geographically, socially, and economically to cultivate, process, and sell cannabis. People in the cannabis business sometimes don't fully appreciate what it takes to become part of the mainstream, because they are poised and ready, after years of lobbying, to move their illegal operations out of the shadows and onto Main Street as quickly as possible. We've not been able to do a full assessment of the impact to the city of Lakeport and to its people to understand the risks involved in going ahead without a full and comprehensive understanding. Consideration must be given to residents who, while they might agree with legalization, may not appreciate what the reality of legalization will bring. Please slow down, be mindful of unintended consequences, and do not grant any retail or dispensary activity in the city of Lakeport at this time. Thank you.
Should I just leave? Please, here. There's one for each city council that would like to record this.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Jennings. I wasn't too aware of your guys' meetings about cannabis-related items. Wish Mary would have told me since I'm heavily involved in Lake County. I'm also a dispensary owner in Clear Lake. I don't know why you guys didn't reach out to us. Lake Serable Solutions, I've been the owner-operator going on two years now. It's been up and running for about nine years. I'm in a good relationship with Tim Siller, interim chief of police. Mark Snyder's the guy that handles all my background checks. I'm the first one on the stack, first one getting approved, along with a list of other things going on. There's only been one time that our dispensary, when I wasn't owning it, has ever had a problem, one of the prior owners, was broken into. Only damage done was a broken window, nothing was stolen, because we follow our procedures for security, where everything stays locked up. We have alarm systems. Granted, it'd be nice if Clear Lake could be on their alarm response time a little bit better, but nonetheless, there's no issues. At the same time, I'm one of those horrible people that we just heard about that's been operating in dark shadows, and I have come out of the dark shadows, and I'm in the compliant market. Currently in the process of getting a high-baker greenhouse facility in Clear Lake, distribution, manufacturing, processing, and packaging. I'm a one-stop shop, I do everything. Currently employ four people that are on W-2s. I pay federal income tax, I pay my payroll tax. I anticipate hiring 10 more people. I also projected sales of 3 to 5 million in my first year. Clear Lake has taken a 5% development agreement. In order for us to proceed forward, so for every million dollars I make in a year, they're getting $50,000. It's not a bad gig, and I get it, don't get blinded by the money. But this is a business, we are here, and a lot of your guys, people living in Lakeport and the surrounding area, come to my dispensary. We have the best ratings, everyone comes to us, we do about $2,000 a day. I'm on a POS system, track and trace. I have been prior to the law saying you need to be on a track and trace. I'm very open with my city manager, first thing basis with everyone, people come check everything out. Seems like the big taboo subject right now is about retail storefront. I think when people think of a retail storefront, they feel as if they're going to be walking down the sidewalk, there's going to be pot smoking out the front windows, peace signs, green crosses, and that's illegal in California, while you can't do anything about. So you're going to have a very unmarked location, names are unique, you're not going to visit the lead store, come on in, you know, we're Lake Serable Solutions. The name can probably hint to a few things, but there's, you know, we don't mark it and have big pot lists on our windows, you're not going to have that in Lakeport. I actually would like to put in an application, and we'll pursue that, putting in a dispensary here in Lakeport, and I'd like to not have that business taken away. I'd like to be one of those model people that you can use. I'm a model person when it comes to Clear Lake, to Lake County. I hold multiple large waterboard certificates, which are needed for cultivating large scale. I have CECL reviewed, biological assessments, I do everything by the books, and these are everyone that will come in here wanting to do a license of some sort or another, will be doing everything by the book. You're not talking about the bad apples, you're talking about the business and the people. I'm not in here in a suit and tie, this is what I wear, but I mean business when I come and do business things. I think you should pass your ordinance, I quickly read it in the past 10 minutes. I probably would have to give my Ria a lot of compliments on that one, I'm sure she's had a lot of input from dealing with the county, everything else. I don't think you should limit, I think you should allow retail, I understand limiting the non-volatile. The only thing I saw under your retail was you're closing at 7:00, maybe just kind of matching up with the state and allowing your said sales to be open from 7:00 to 10:00 would be the ideal thing. Same thing with your, the pounds that you have, five pounds of flour or plants, you know, you put a plant in a pot of soil, then you have five pounds, I think that's something that you guys maybe should consider and look at. Your dispensaries are going to be the place where any of your patients coming to get plants, there are six plants, they're going to need to go to a dispensary to buy these plants, they can't just go to anyone on the street, they can't just go to some nursery, they need to go to a dispensary to get their plants. I think you should maybe change the language in the retail section of your ordinance and not incorporate plants as the weight allowed on your shelf in the dispensaries, because you're going to have 100 plants, 200 plants, you have multiple plants in there, and that weight would add up. I encourage all of you guys to reach out to me, Lake Serable Solutions, if you ever want to come do a walkthrough, Buzzin Systems, you know, everything is packaged properly. Yeah, I think you guys should definitely look at your neighboring people, such as Clear Lake, and see what we're doing, and even with the county of Lake, and see where they're kind of progressing. Some big things happened today, and we're all starting to get on the page, and I don't want you guys left behind. Thank you.
Chris, before you, Blee, you said one thing, you gave a couple million-dollar numbers, and then you said 2K per day. They match up, so your annual sales?
So currently, we do about 2,000 a day in our retail, 15,000 to 2,000, 2,000's on our high end and our average. That's just for retail only. So Greg Folsom, you know, part of our application to move forward to do other types of businesses, I marked down, I wanted distribution, I wanted manufacturing, non-volatile, I want to do ethanol extraction. The state has listed ethanol extraction as a non-volatile. I want to do processing and packaging, I work with the hybrid creative for all my packaging needs, everything's child-approved, compliant, all the warning labels, the triangles, everything you need to have, testing, I work with SC Labs, a lot of the labs are shutting down, working with people. So part of their only work with distributors, retail people, testing's expensive, it's going to be quite a bit when all the new test requirements come out. And my projected sales going, everything other than the retail was going to be in that 3 to 5 range when it comes down to it, distribution's big. The state has only awarded 40 licensed types so far, since they came on board not too long ago. There's only a handful of distributors. Like the gentleman said earlier, you know, three-quarters of California is saying no right now. It's only because they're trying to get their stuff together, and it's understandable. California, the CDFI, I believe, that's that group, they're doing another licensing seminar in March, which means they're anticipating a lot of people coming online by early summer when they get things together. And in answer to the question about Calistoga and Napa, they've been holding roundtable events for citizen input, and they are proceeding forward, allowing dispensaries. Currently, you're allowed to do deliveries as well, if you have a dispensary or a storefront. I can pass through anywhere to go do my deliveries, you're only allowed to take only so much when it comes down to it. And, you know, we did fight wanting to do like a 2 to 3% on the sales, we felt that would be a little more fair, you know, at the end of the day, you got 15% excise tax coming from the state, you got your ounce taxes, you got all the, as soon as you harvest it, you got a weigh-a-tax, because people are doing a fresh-frozen, where they just harvest it, freeze it, and use it for manufacturing. So everyone's trying to get their hands in the tax pool and get everything taxed that they can. Unfortunately, the people that get screwed in the end is the farmer or the consumer. So they're expecting prices to potentially rise up to 70% when it comes down to it. Yeah.
Sounds like cigarettes.
It is, at the end of the day. But I urge you guys to, your ordinance looks great, proceed forward. I would highly recommend it. I don't think having a storefront's going to turn into an, oh my God, this is the worst thing ever. At the end of the day, you guys can always shut it down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimberly. I'm the owner of Hummer, Leno Natural, a cannabis company. I just wanted to clarify and educate just a little bit. Yes, there are a lot of black-market people out there hiding in the shadows, but there's a lot of us that have been legal for a very long time. I've had my business license since 2015. I pay federal taxes, I pay my taxes, I care about my community. The state of California is working it out, but one thing that is hard and true right now, irregardless of how much they're going to charge for permits, or what the final annual permits are going to say, as cannabis producers, we have to have our temporary permits by January 1st. Otherwise, we can't help patients, we're done until we get those permits. Now, last time I was here, I told you I would be getting four permits. I will now be getting eight, because I'm a microbusiness, so I have to get a microbusiness permit. If I don't, a distribution center will have to come to my home and pick up my product. A lab will have to come to my home and pick up my product for testing. I don't want anybody at my home disturbing my neighborhood. I am dedicated to having no footprint whatsoever, other than living in my neighborhood and growing flowers. That's it. I understand that the older generation was greatly scarred by Reefer Madness. We all saw those horrible movies when we were very young, and they left impressions, impressions that are hard to get over. And then you have years of the government, oh, marijuana's bad, marijuana's evil, baby smoked a joint, now she's a whore. It doesn't work like that. Cannabis is such a healing plant, and you don't have to listen to somebody in the cannabis community. Do your research. Google cannabis and cancer. Google about five different articles, read them all, highlight the thread that goes through all of them, that's where the truth lies. That's where you get rid of the he said, she said. Educate yourself. If you want to ask me, I'll educate you.
Kimberly, I just want to remind you, we're not talking about the pros and cons of smoking weed.
No, but there's such...
Rather the ordinance?
Yes, and the ordinance is, I understand their fear. We're not asking to be downtown between Bob's Big Store and Mona's Bakery. Put us out in the corner in industrial, but give us a place in the community. We are a part of this fabric, like it or not.
I would like you to wait.
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Meredith Lehman. I'm a Lakeport resident. I would like to see the council wait on this issue, not just because three quarters of the state is waiting to make a wise decision. It's not because I'm concerned even about particular crimes in relation to these storefronts. What I'm concerned primarily about is an issue that was brought up by our first speaker. And that is the nature of our small town makes it different than larger communities, even larger communities like Clear Lake. And I have to say, I admire the entrepreneurial spirit of people who are, who are in this and I understand their enthusiasm, particularly when they're very successful. But I think we also need to look at the legacy that we already have from a similar small town very close to us, and that is Upper Lake. Upper Lake was going through something of an amazing renaissance a few years ago. Storefronts that had been closed and abandoned, the town looking like a ghost town, suddenly had, there had been a revival, they had gotten grants, there was urban renewal there. There were many small businesses, boutiques of one kind or another. They were enhanced by the close proximity of a world-class resort where now men no longer came just for the fishing tournaments, but their families and their wives would come with them because there was a pleasant town to do a lot of shopping. When the dispensaries opened there, the effect was almost immediate. Business after business after business went out of business. I knew several of the people who owned those stores and their customers simply did not want to be experiencing the shopping in that town when there were so many people who were smoking marijuana, waiting for marijuana, whether that's right or wrong, that's a reality. Now, Main Street here is struggling as it is. Our town's storefronts are often misleading. Somebody got a wonderful idea about putting artwork in it, but it hides the fact that so many businesses are going under. I don't think we need to add another challenge to them. We've had people who wanted to start businesses here who faced challenge after challenge, sometimes by the county, sometime by the city. I have friends who wanted to start something as non-controversial as a Quiznos and after years of battling about city regulations, finally threw up their hands and said no. So if we can be that concerned about keeping out sandwiches and soup, could we at least take time to consider the impact that storefronts would have? People need medical marijuana, I have no problem with that. But when we start having it as a retail facility without any idea of how it's going to impact us, except how we've actually seen it impact Upper Lake and other small communities, then I think we have to look. Lakeport lives on family-oriented tourism and storefronts that retail sell marijuana are not going to enhance that experience. We also have a problem that the city and county has not really wanted to grapple with, and that is homelessness. And I'm wondering how we combine our homeless population with ever easier access to retail marijuana. We have people suffering on the street and making it just easier for them to be intoxicated. I know there's a black market. I'd like to see us be able to deal with that, but I don't think this is the way to do it. Thank you.
Hi, it's Maggie.
Hey.
I have a couple of questions. Is delivery off the table?
Not right now, no.
Okay, I mean, I, we, has delivery been eliminated?
No.
So you, okay.
Right now, in this ordinance, there's two retail with delivery.
Okay, so delivery is still being considered. Okay. First of all, I have some signatures here. It says, "As residents of the city of Lakeport, I respectfully request that the city council devote not to allow commercial cultivation nor commercial sales, delivery or retail of cannabis products or byproducts within the city of Lakeport." I only had a couple of days to get these, but I've got 31 signatures here to present to you and nobody that's here tonight is on this list, so that is a separate issue. Deliveries, on December the 14th, in the city of Concord, there was an armed robbery of a marijuana delivery truck. Are you aware of that?
No.
The chief of police said that it was the seventh armed robbery they had had since April of 2017 of a delivery vehicle. Somebody called in, ordered marijuana, they go to deliver it, that, those people didn't order it, but they were robbed. So I am concerned about law enforcement. We come from almost 100 years of combined law enforcement and our family. And marijuana has been an issue and it is going to be an issue forever when it's misused. The black market is there and you're not going to get rid of it. They say, said on the news the other night that the cartel is happy that California has made it legal because they're going to lower the price of pot and they'll sell more than the state's going to sell or the dispens for the retail sales are going to sell. Cultivation, are we still considering cultivation within the city of Lakeport? Commercial cultivation?
Uh, nothing outdoor.
No, I mean, commercial cultivation?
Inside, yes.
Yes, so that's still a consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking, because I, I don't know. Would that be run by somebody within the city or would that be bringing somebody like from Clear Lake in to do something like that?
Well, the business owner could be from wherever.
Okay. And you're talking about two retail permits to be sold or issued if this was approved?
If this was approved, that's what's in this ordinance.
Okay, and those, as our understanding, is not going to be located downtown?
Right now, the zoning does not include any downtown business. It includes industrial, C3, C2.
And those are basically at the south end of town?
Well, the, some of the C2 is closer in.
C2 would be your, your standard shopping centers.
Okay, but 11th Street was eliminated.
It, it's been discussed about eliminating it, but there hasn't been a mechanism really put in place to physically eliminate it.
Sorry, Kevin, C2 on 11th Street is still in there, C2, Main Street and Clear Lake Avenue.
For High and Clear Lake Avenue.
Yeah, can you add your, your central business district that takes the heart of downtown? That's not C2, but both north and south of that is primarily C2.
Okay, because I thought you guys eliminated that.
We have been discussing it and this will be our opportunity. If we're going to make changes, we want to hear from you tonight.
Please eliminate that because I live right in the middle of that.
What and how we're going to proceed with this. So that, we're glad that.
I want you to eliminate the whole thing.
Okay.
Anyway, I just, I have some questions. If you were to go ahead and allow retail sales and there's no commercial cultivation in Lakeport yet?
Well, commercial cultivation would be allowed inside, so no outdoor.
But you can't open a store on January 2nd and start selling it. It takes time to produce the product.
Well, Kevin, do you want to touch on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, we're looking at, once this ordinance would take effect, you would still need to go through the process of being issued a, a permit for, for commercial cultivation. So yes, it would take some time.
A year?
It includes a use permit and this, I mean, you're talking probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, of three to six months.
To grow the product?
Well, no, to get the permit through the city.
No, I'm talking about.
That I, that I can't answer.
I'm just wondering where you're going to get this marijuana from to sell?
Well, Chris would probably be a better person to answer that question, but I'm sure that if someone has the opportunity to open that store, they'll figure it out.
That's what the distributor licenses for. The distributors are the ones who will actually be providing the retail out.
So likely not, if not one in Lakeport.
We, the current proposed ordinance would have the ability to be a distributor, but if there wasn't one, they could use a distributor anywhere in the state.
Okay.
And, and currently, both cultivation and distribution, per the current draft ordinance, are limited to C3 and industrial.
Right.
We cannot include C3.
My concern is if our police department has the personnel to handle what would happen if this was allowed.
We have not done a full assessment, we don't know.
I know, there's so many unknowns, so I'm asking you to vote no, to not allow it at this time until you do some more research and get some answers. Thank you.
Thanks for me.
Can I say, can I come up again?
Real quick.
Seems like everyone's kind of like, ah, I don't know how the licensing works. So you get a local approval, then you go before, you try to get your state approval, and everything is individualized. So retail is its own license, trimming the product is its own license, growing is its own license. And then, once these licenses are issued by the state, there's going to be a state database that if I was a, with all my licenses, I could log online to the state database, take a look at the state database and make, oh, over here, it's John Boyer, he's grown, he's, he has an indoor cultivation license down in Santa Barbara or LA or wherever throughout the state. Let's go, so he has. And so just because someone has a retail here in Lakeport doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to have to go grow the product, distribute the product, have, have all that themselves. I, in a perfect world, yes, it'd be nice to have control over your entire product from start to finish if you're able to do that. But at the same time, if you have a retail, there's already distributors across the state that are very reputable and have a great product that meets all the standards that's needed for testing and whatnot. And that way, there's a big people to reach out to. So you don't necessarily have to say, yeah, you need to have this to do that, you need to have all these things together to do this one thing. You can have individual licensing and it might make it a little bit harder for someone to try and formulate everything and get it all together in their store or their manufacturing, however, wherever they're at. But there's multiple licenses out there for people to obtain and you're able to do it throughout the state entirely and work with one of those licensed people throughout the state.
Thank you.
My name is David Velazquez and we're fairly new to Lakeport. We moved from Minnesota. We really like Lakeport. We like, we like wine country, we like Lake County. That's going to be very brief, but I would just recommend that you refrain from passing the ordinance at this point. I think, I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of it. I can see a lot of reasons though, that, practical reasons, that it might be premature. I would recommend, I don't know if this is possible, but if you want to figure out a way to try and keep retail away from like Safeway area and so on, is there possible to put a buffer zone around residential areas? Maybe something like that that would work to, I don't know if that would work or not, but maybe that, that might be something you could think about. Anyway, I don't have much else to say, except we, we really like Lakeport as, as it is. I think there are other opportunities in Lake County for retail cannabis and I think that's just fine. Other places can probably, probably have a lot more parity with it than we do. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else?
My name is Mary Jo Velazquez. Some conversations I've had with people have indicated that those of you looking at the vote to legalize marijuana might be assuming that everybody that voted to legalize it is because they want the sales, they want the et cetera. I'm part of a group of people that are very environmentally concerned and I voted to legalize. I don't smoke, I never have, I never will, I don't want it around me, but I hate the pollution, I hate what the illegal grows are doing. And it was perhaps a vain, naive thought, but I thought if it could get regulated, so we'll stop the superphosphates, dumping phosphate into the lake, great. That's my reason. So don't assume 50% of the people voted for it, therefore 50% of people want it. I just want the illegal grows to stop.
There's more people out there we haven't heard from.
My name is Susan King and I live in Lakeport and I just have a simple question. Is there such a thing as a provisional license with an evaluation period where the city could gather information as it relates to crime statistics or neighborhood disturbances?
The, the current ordinance would provide that, that these be subject to an annual review. So I mean, if there were issues that were arising, they could be addressed and, and you know, if those were significant enough to, you know, revoke the permit, that, that would be a procedure that would be in place.
It would be in place.
That was one of the, the main reasons we looked at kind of taking it out of the zoning ordinance per se and moving it into a separate section of the Lakeport municipal code is that it would give us a little bit more, some more tools in regards to review and, you know, making it, it's not similar to other land uses where it runs with the land permit.
What would be the criteria though to say, okay, we need to shut this down? Crime, you're going to serve.
Hey, Kevin, will you say that again in the microphone?
What would be the criteria then for determining that we've had enough and we need to shut it down? Is it similar to something like a bar downtown or would it be, would you be receiving citizen input as to the disturbances that they see within their own neighborhoods? Or is it the kind of thing that would be difficult to execute legally if it turned out that it was not such a good idea to authorize it?
There's quite a bit in the, in the way of performance standards outlined in the ordinance in regards to what would be reviewed as part of an operations plan. That includes security and some other things, but there's not like a, you know, a set threshold or a number of complaints or something like that would automatically trigger it. But there's quite a bit of detailed criteria in the ordinance pertaining to, you know, staying, staying in line with the approved operations plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My neighbor's saying blue, I belong to cannabis that have a Lakeport. And I personally oppose having marijuana in the city of Lakeport. But I know that there are others who disagree with that. But one of the, one of the things that I would like to have addressed is I feel that the historic area of Lakeport should be off limits completely. That would be 7th Street to Martin Street?
It is right now.
Okay. In addition to that, I would like to also bring up the fact that, or maybe not the fact, but if you're looking at zoning, what, C, is that correct?
C2.
C2. I would hope that when you, would that mean if it's in C2, they can automatically have a store there?
They would need to obtain a cannabis retailer permit and then also go through the use permit process, which would include a, a review by the planning commission, notification to neighbors and a public hearing.
Okay, one area that concerns me in particular is North Main Street and Clear Lake. That particular corner on the southeast. particular corner, on the southeast corner, that building does not have adequate parking, in my opinion. That's a dangerous corner, it's been a problem for a long time, and I don't think it's a safe place to enter or exit from, so I would hope that areas like that would be excluded, even though they're in the proper zone. So that's one of my big concerns, that not only that area, but any other area that, that would fall within the, would be considered an unsafe area, and I truly believe that is an unsafe area.
Okay.
Until something's done to correct the problems there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be very grief, in my viewing, I have a business in town, I know I'm shoveling against the tide, but when I hear terms like cannabis retailer's permit, you know, I just, really what we're talking about here is selling dope in downtown Lakeport. I think it's a bad idea. You know, whether you talk about the Seventh Street, to, to Martin Street, historic downtown, Lakeport is our home, my daughter lives here, I don't want dope being sold in retail stores in Lakeport. I echo Meredith Lehman's comments about Upper Lake, I know the business owners there who are really run out of town by the next door dispensary patrons. And anyway, it's, it's a very volatile topic, and I know a lot of you who are involved in the business aspect of it feel, you know, that this is, you know, very dear to your heart, all I can say is that you folks here are the Lakeport representatives, and I think dope, sales, let's, let's not cut to any words here, cannabis, marijuana, it's dope. Thirty, forty years ago, we were sitting around saying, good grief, Lakeport, Lake County, what are we going to get here? How about casino gambling? In, in the early seventies, we were thinking about bringing casino gambling to Lake County. What a great thing some people thought that would be, well, we have casino gambling, if you will, in Lake County now, is it a good thing for us? I, I just, I, I say, you know, the shoveling against the tide, that I don't think it's a good idea to have retail sale, I don't think it's a good idea to have any of the commercial operations in Lakeport, the retail sales particularly. Thank you.
Does council want to leave the public hearings open and start discussing this, or should we close it?
Maybe more orderly if we close it, we can always reopen.
Just reopen it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else want to come up before we close this public hearing?
Are you going to reopen it after your discussions?
Maybe.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andre Ross. You've seen me here before you in the past on behalf of clients, I'm here on behalf of Andre Ross. I'm a lawyer in Lake County. I've chosen to make Lake County my home, I am a former resident of Lakeport, and I have observed very, very diligently over the course of the last ten years or so, how the city of Lakeport and how the county of Lake have dealt with this issue. I have consulted with many potential clients and a few actual clients about issues infused with cannabis. I'm not going to stand up here today and, and ask you to vote a particular way because of my personal feelings or my business experience, but I do want to share with you something I've thought about for a long time, watching this problem plot forward. I think any public entity wrestling with these issues requires two things, courage and competence, and I want to commend all of you on the hard work you've done, the courage that you have evidenced before the public at multiple hearings, and I've looked at your ordinance, and I would say you've done a very good job. I commend Kevin Ingram for his hard work, I think your planning commission has done a lot of hard work, I've heard a lot of good ideas spoken about, I've heard some maybe not so good ideas spoken about. I don't envy you in the position of making this decision, but I applaud you in the way you've tried to serve the members of your public, that has not occurred in a vacuum. People out there see the work you're doing, whether you decide to move forward under the ordinance as it stands or not, or make changes, leave that in your good hands, but I don't think anybody can throw any criticism to the city of Lakeport, to its staff, to council. You've done a fine job dealing with this, very difficult issue, and in comparison to the way this issue has been handled in other public entities, I, I thoroughly commend what you've done, I commend your work product, and you get to make the tough decisions. Thank you very much for your service to Lakeport.
Thank you.
Want to follow up on a couple of quick items. Not the first rodeo in the city of Kalinga, the first city in Fresno County to actually regulate cannabis, it was a bumpy road, and one of the roads they couldn't get over in the initial going was the idea of a storefront retail. The dispensary threatened to torpedo the whole ordinance, and they also had to go to ballot anyway because they debated a cannabis tax, and if there is a middle ground to be found here, the Kalinga model could provide that, you could take storefront retail, bring it back later in the form of a ballot measure if the council was willing to do that, at the same time maybe examine any cannabis tax, which also will have to go to the voters, and then you can get basically a referendum on it. I predict if you do that, just as it did in the city of Kalinga, despite all the dope references, that it would pass, and it would pass easily, just as the tax did. People are not going to stand up here and take some of the grief that the dopers of the state of California have done over the last 20 years, to take it on the chin like that is, is difficult. And I'll tell you something, for the people here who are saying, we don't want it here, it is here, and what is so ironic to me is that the people who should be begging and pleading to regulate cannabis because it's so bad and because it's destroying the environment and it's destroying our youth, they should be, they should be the ones demanding these regulations, not me. I don't have a horse in the race other than as patient, I don't want to have to go to Clearlake or Hopland or whatever other place has the, the boldness to actually take a seat to sale and, and establish safe access for its residents, but if you can't get there tonight, that's cool, but let's just get over the idea that we are establishing something new in the city of Lakeport, something that's more dangerous than doing nothing. The most dangerous thing to the citizens of Lakeport and the children of Lakeport is to do nothing, and to call people pothatch for the rest of our lives, even though the pothatch won last November, adult use cannabis is a real thing now. What you do on the regulatory side, do whatever you can do, split the baby, reject it all, that's going to be up to you, but let's do so rationally, you know, the only thing you can do is control land use and permitting. If you can do that, cool, you will not end the bigger debate about drug use, you will not stop everyone from saying all cannabis is medicinal, any more than you're going to stop other people from saying all dope is evil, but what you have before you today is an ordinance that would work if you decided to put it to work, and so I'm going to ask you to do that, you always have the ability to go back and revisit it, if you can't do storefront retail, you can go to Plan B, but take the first baby step to regulate cannabis, and do not pretend, as some people here would, that doing nothing is a viable option, because it is not. Thank you.
I don't appreciate being lectured by Michael Green. All I'm asking is that you take your time, you think it through, and you don't have to do anything today, and that doesn't mean that we're going to have trouble. Please be cautious. Can't go back. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, thanks for all your comments, and bring you back to council. Let's see, who wants one? You know, I'll start, I'll just say that this isn't the ordinance that I thought that we were going to be presenting tonight, our committee started working on this in January, and our initial idea was that half the people voted for it, half the people did not, and so how can we come up with something that's a good fit for our city? And we looked at something a little more modest, and it did not include any retail, it did have some small businesses in industrial and C3 that allowed delivery, and, and that was it, it's very simple with the thought that we can keep working on this next year, but that would be a place to start with this, and obviously it came back from planning with more options added in, and I do think it's unfair that we of five people sitting here have to decide what we're supposed to do for the future, and so we've been begging people to come and talk to us, and for the most part, people have been disengaged, but I feel like it's one of those things that you pass, and then everyone comes out and says, who did this? Why did you do this? So, you know, when, when the planning commission added more retail and lounges and testing into the ordinance, I said, well, why is all this added in? You must have had an outpouring of people that wanted retail, and the answer was no. There was, you know, Ron Rose Kane, and obviously there's some people that wanted that didn't show up, but there was more so people coming in saying that they didn't want any retail. So now we have this ordinance that looks nothing like what we started with, and I, based on what we've heard tonight, would go back to that more conservative where we started in industrial and C3, you know, with, without the retail, because next year, we can keep working on this, we can see, you know, what happens in the other cities, why would we risk our small town resources with, without a full assessment of what that toll might be on our city? So I would urge us to pull it back, take a pause, and, and then keep working on it next year. There's a reason why 60% of the cities in Colorado don't have retail, they've tried it, and there's a reason why a lot of cities in California are not moving forward with it. It doesn't mean we would never do it, that it means we're listening to the public, we're being cautious, we're being cautious with our resources, we don't know what it will do to our police department, we have spent so much time on this in our planning department, we have other work to get done, and I'd like to make sure we have the time and resources to do that as well.
So basically what you're saying is to not have any retail at this time, and which includes deliveries, is that correct?
That's what we had started with, yes. We, we started with delivery only, so that if people wanted to get it they could, that the people that voted against it would never know that it's there.
I think that the thing that we have tried to do since the very beginning, when we had the administrative citation, when we went out to try and put together a local growing ordinance, we got the stakeholders in there, we got groups that were actually already growing marijuana in their house, and we got them all together, and we borrowed and begged to get other ordinances together, we put together an ordinance that has been working for a number of years without any issues whatsoever, according to the chief. It's been a flawless, integrated process where everybody understands the rules. I cannot, you know, in earnest, listen to this and not feel that there is some serious built-in prejudice against the idea that marijuana is suddenly acceptable, and I've shared that, I had someone, you know, pull out a, you know, a joint and start smoking, and all of a sudden I had this epiphany, this is now legal, and I just feel like some of the older generation, of which I am a member, and as a business person, been in business for, in Lake County for over 47 years, I totally understand it, but the characterization that it's such a problem really bothers me when there's, I have gotten lots of input from people that have visited cannabis activities in other states, and you bring up Colorado, and I've heard some stories where they went on the pot tours, and they went in and saw the most incredibly well-run, most advanced, beautiful factories with hundreds of employees doing millions of dollars worth of business, and certainly that's not going to be what we're having here, but I do feel that there's no way that I would support retail under the circumstances in the city of Lakeport, but at the same time, I think that, as the one lady said, that she voted in favor because of regulation. I live over on the Lost Continent most of the day, over in Lucerne, and I have untold amounts of problems with alcoholics and homeless people and so forth, I can never remember any issues about marijuana that is a big deal, but I think there's a stigma attached to this that is such a negative thing. I think anything that you can say about marijuana, you can say in spades about alcohol over and over again, and every day someone gets killed by someone who is a drunken driver, and I just think that this is such a, like a volatile issue, that everybody just automatically assumes that all the negativity and the meth and all the bad stuff that goes on is associated with marijuana growers and cultivators and testers and all this stuff, and I could not disagree more when I see what goes on in the other parts of the world with alcohol, and it's like, it's okay, it's, oh, well, my son, oh, he's just got drunk, it's no big deal, at least he's not doing meth or weed, my God, you know, we go on with this all the time, and it's like, I don't think, it's the same atmosphere that we had years ago, that people out there, and I've heard it over and over in various cities and places, that are doing a marvelous job, they're excellent business people, I talked to the mayor in Clearlake, he said that people down there want to pay their taxes, they want to do the right thing, they want to go by the regulations, they have all the security, they have everything locked up, if you tried to vulgarize them, you couldn't even get anything, which was already said, and, and yet we characterize these people as some kind of a problem that's just, we're going to fall off the face of the earth with all this crime villainy, and, and I kind of have to take exception to the fact that no one's standing up for the dopers, and which I do take offense to that, and I've never smoked marijuana in any great amount more than, you know, a very modest amount, let's put it that way, back in the seventies, I think, but anyway, I, I think it's unfair to characterize that, because I have a daughter that has rheumatoid arthritis, and she's 30 years old, and she suffers interminable pain in her small joints, in her hands and feet, and she works on her feet all day long, and the CBDs or whatever it is is one of the only things that helped her, I have another girl that works for me that has rheumatoid arthritis, and she takes CBDs through some kind of a vape pen, and needs access to that, and it isn't necessarily available. I talked to a guy today, a local businessman, who was telling me about an old guy that gets a cookie for a hundred bucks so he could eat this thing, so he could spend time with his grandchildren, another lady that is suffering interminably with other medical needs, and these people are denied access in this town because we're obviously not going to have retail, but there's a lot of people out there that, that use this legitimately for medical reasons. I know that a lot of people like the other side of it, but I, I got to say that I feel that there's a little bit of this age-related stigma, and I, I totally get it, but I think that doing nothing would be a serious mistake. I have no problem pulling retail, but I'm with the lady that says, regulation is important, we need to make sure that we have safe standards, and make sure that if there is cultivation and testing, why don't we bring it into the fold, control what goes on instead of letting all the criminals and the cartels and the people coming in from all over the place doing their business here anyway, why don't we take control and start the first step, and maybe someday we can get to dispensaries? But I don't think doing nothing is the answer, and I think it's a big mistake, so I'm going on record saying, pull the retail, have the rest of it in C3 and industrial, away from the town of Lakeport, forget about C2, and go with the ordinance without the Forget about C2 and go with the ordinance without the retail and without the delivery." And that's how I feel about it. And obviously, I feel strongly about it. And I've been here almost as long as anybody except Stan Jones. So I don't agree with that.
I have to sit next to this guy.
I agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
You're following that with "and I agree"? I like it.
It sounded like there was no other holdup to any of the ordinance except for the retail location. What I'm curious about is, to people who are staunchly opposed to the retail locations, would they be opposed to delivery? Would they be opposed to a delivery?
At least one person is, I know.
At least one person is opposed to delivery.
Because of the seven robberies.
Right.
The paper that I gave you has 31 signatures of residents that are opposed to delivery.
Can I see that? Thank you. These are signatures.
Okay.
Now, this is a petition to not allow commercial cultivation.
Can you talk a little more into that, please? Thank you.
This petition is not only against the commercial sales, but also commercial cultivation. So that's like the whole ordinance right there.
They only had a few days. I could get more if you want more.
Do you wanna add to that thought?
Give me a moment. Give me a moment to compose the thought.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
That's me, Councilmember Terry. So I think a lot of really good points have been made tonight. This is an industry that carries a lot of baggage with it. Nobody's gonna argue about that. And aside from the names that, like, dopeurs and potheads and things that may not have always had value-laden connotations, they do now. And you can't separate that right now because we're in this transition period where an illegal industry that's been besieged with all the criminal risks that accompany something that's extremely valuable and illegal at the same time are coming along with us as we take a look at what options are available. So I remember in the beginning when the board of supervisors started first talking about cannabis permits and things like that. And the big elephant in the room was the adult use, what we have come now to understand as adult use, being packaged as medicinal. And everybody knew that the state of California was moving forward or contemplating only medicinal. And so everybody had to kinda lie. And it really just bugs me when we're creating systems where people have to lie. I just hate it. It doesn't work. It doesn't fit. I so much prefer logical systems that are well-reasoned, that are regulated, and fit reality. So the reality that we've been looking at, first with the working force, the task force or the group, the committee that we first formed, and then later to the Planning Commission, and then now before the council, since it is an ongoing and evolving project, has dealt with a lot of input from the state, from local industry people. And I've sort of honed my own priorities. I care about public safety. Not only the risks that are involved with the activity as it goes forward or as it could possibly be, the people breaking into delivery buses, the people breaking into, like that one break-in that Chris Jennings told us about at dispensary in Clearlake. So I care about public safety and that sort of risk. Simultaneously, I care about public safety for people who want to consume it, either because it has validated medicinal value or because they've just smoked it and they feel like smoking it, which are people that I've known my whole life. And, you know, I don't really think of them as dopers or potheads or stuff like that. They're people that I've grown up with, that worked with, gone to school with. They're here. They're here. I care about them, too. I want them to have access to a product that doesn't have pesticides. They're gonna fry their lungs. I want them to have access to product in a legal manner so that it no longer becomes... They don't hear pothead and doper in their head as they try to score from some local drug dealer. I don't think that's necessary. These people that I've grown up with are fully functional people. And it's that they're choosing to consume or have an activity that has just now become legal. The people that I am interested in working with to come get applications or get permits at Lakeport and also from the state in order to operate legally are not the people that I would throw into that category of pothead and dopers. These are people who are gonna have to be savvy. They're gonna have to know how to navigate a regulatory system for Lakeport as well as the state. They're going to be spending a lot of money, so they need to be capitalized. Some of them might be locals, not all of them. This is the first conversation or topic in Lakeport that I recall and in Lake County where all of a sudden, it's really bad when people come in to start a business in Lakeport or Lake County. Typically, our marketing system is all about, "Bring people to Lake County. Hey, have them, you know, start a local business. Let's thrive. Let's do that." Except for this industry. This one, it's wrong. And I don't really... I don't follow the logic of that one. Because my goal is, if we can establish a regulatory system that will protect the public, mitigate the negative impacts to the neighbors, we've got something we can work with. And just as we've heard in public input tonight, this is not the end-all, be-all. You know, there are changes that continue to be made at the state level through the regulations, through the permitting processes, that will continue to tweak and be modified and clarified as the industry further comes into the light. Because there are so many different business models that are possible that your definitions are gonna get more and more specific on a permitting level. I think that this ordinance almost gets that, almost accomplishes those goals of maintaining public safety, creating a regulatory system by which companies who, or organizations, or agencies, businesses, who have been operating illegally, will have an opportunity to now do so legally, which means they can integrate successfully into our neighborhood, not our residential neighborhood, but our Lakeport community. And they can do so successfully and safely without threatening anyone. The changes, the one really contentious issue seems to be the retailers. So I'm open to negotiating on retailers. You know, if the council decides that we don't wanna start with retail this year, I'll go with that. I'll go with that because we got next year and we got the year after that. I'm comfortable with where the working group was with retail delivery only in C3 or industrial. But I'm okay with the council. This is a pretty big first step. And the impacts of the testing, the distribution, manufacturing, those can all be regulated to minimize their impacts. So if the input that we're having from the public is strictly around retail, then let's take a look at that. Let's take a look at retail. But I think that the work that we have done so far with the rest of the businesses in establishing out of Main Street, out of our residential areas, out of the historical places where we wanna protect that culture that's been established and is valued, I'm okay with that, too.
I just wanna clarify the whole wrong, the business is wrong. No one loves the new, good business more than I do. I just think that Lakeport is maybe not quite ready. And that maybe we don't need to be the ones to spearhead it. But I'm not placing a judgment or saying that's a wrong thing.
Yeah. No, I get that. I get that. And I think that it seems to center mostly around the retail. So the other licenses, the indoor commercial cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing, don't seem to draw the same ire, which is a valid position as well. There are many reasons to be insecure about the threats around retail. As far as... Because that's the one point where these permits or this activities, these business activities interface with the public. And so that's valid. If we wanna take a slow approach to retail, that's fine. I have not gathered the same sort of opposition to the other permits. But I am okay with starting with two retail locations in C3 or industrial. Even if they're delivery only, I'm okay with that.
Kenny, did you say no delivery or you were okay with delivery?
Well, I think that delivery in and of itself, it has a lot of issues and it can be problematic in a lot of ways. First time Michael talked about the difference between dispensaries or retail. And it was abundantly clear to me that dispensaries would be much better. In the situation that I see now, I would rather not have delivery or retail, either one. And we would take the slow movement away. Because I think that just the delivery, I mean, we're gonna have, obviously, could have delivery into town anyway from other places. So I guess that's a consideration. But we don't have to be the one sponsoring it or, you know, with our ordinance. But I just feel if we're not gonna do retail, then I don't know that we should do delivery either one. But, you know, that's why we're here.
So then your position would be no retail permits here, but not banning retail from coming in?
Well, I don't know. We can do that. I don't think you can stop the delivery.
Yes, we can ban deliveries within the city limits. We cannot ban travel on roads.
Okay, but the thing is, is how are you going to enforce it when the delivery vans have no markings on them whatsoever?
I didn't say it was enforceable. But also, let's just take that as a point because...
We figured it was not.
Now we're giving the chief a nightmare.
Because if we're saying you can't enforce it because you never know what the delivery vans are, why do we have a problem with delivery? If it's not easily identifiable, if it's a delivery vehicle, why do we have a problem with delivery?
Going back to the person that talked about the Concord one, you get somebody that says, you know, calls up a delivery van and says, "Come to this address." Well, now, when the van comes to that address, the people who called know that's a delivery van, but the people driving by don't know it's a delivery van.
I googled a couple of those addresses, too. And they're really interesting because the only... I only looked at like two or three because I didn't wanna lose track of our conversation. But some of them were people delivering, like, in a parking lot. Or they got out of their car and they were stopped by people as they were walking down the road. So...
Like an ice cream truck?
Yes. So let's not assume we got 31 armed vehicles, you know, or like banker, those things are called, armored vehicles going down the road and getting accosted by, you know, like bazookas or something. It's not... There are... Each situation is also unique, which is not to discount the threats or the security. But in some of those, I think there could be some regulations put in place that might help.
Councilmember Barnes?
I just got stuck thinking about the delivery thing. And I mean, you know, we can also pull statistics of pizza guys getting held up and robbed and taxi drivers being murdered and robbed. And does that mean we don't have taxis or pizza guys anymore? It's, you know, it's a fraction of what happens. It's a part of that business. I've got a lot of conflicting things going on in my mind right now along this. And it's... I hear a lot of concern. I hear a lot of concern about bringing it on in the Lakeport, both just mainly the retail, but also the commercial cultivation. But then I'm drawn back with, man, it's already here. It's already here. You know, you can go down to the park and score pot, you know? The only way to start regulating it and, you know, we've gotta come to terms with the fact that people are doing it. They're going to continue to do it. If we start putting regulations on it, then we can enforce laws on it. Then we can go after the people who are doing it illegally. We can go after the people who are doing it in the black market and selling it to kids. You know, we can start targeting those people more. In my mind, that's how it works. Maybe, you know, maybe the retail aspect isn't gonna work here. For me, I see no difference between pot and alcohol. For me, they're both substances that cloud your way of thinking. And it makes no difference to me one way or another. You know, don't open a dispensary and close all the bars, and it doesn't affect me. I don't care. Doesn't bother me. Except that we're closing businesses in Lakeport. But I mean, I think we have to start... We have to start putting ordinances in place. We have to start the process. If we want the black market and the darker side of things cleared up, we've gotta start putting regulations and laws in place. Because the only thing we're gonna accomplish by not putting regulation and laws in place is allowing the bad guys to keep doing what they're doing. Because they're not gonna stop because we didn't legalize it. They're not gonna stop because we didn't put laws in place. That doesn't solve the problem. So, I mean, I see the signatures on the paper and I appreciate those. And I see the people out here, and I appreciate you. And I understand your concerns, and I understand what you're saying. But how do we do both? How do we stop the black market side of things without making... Because people are doing it and they're not gonna stop just because it's illegal because they're still doing it while it's illegal. So how do we stop the black market side if we don't give the people doing it a legal way to do it? How do we take the crime element out and take away the parking lot stabbings and people breaking into homes to get somebody else's pot grow in their backyard and getting shot when they're jumping a fence? How do we solve those problems? If you have a building you can go to in the middle of the day where it's well-lit and you can go in, you can get your stuff, and you can go home, and you're not smoking it on Main Street? And, I don't know, would that still be a ticketable offense to smoke out in the open?
Well, it would be like any other smoking. I mean, you can't follow the rules with that. Smoking too close to the door.
Same smoking laws.
Same smoking laws.
So it falls more under the smoking laws instead of the alcohol laws? Like no open containers? Right. See, I have that the other way around, you know? You can't have open containers. You can't smoke a joint in the park. You're not supposed to drink beer. You can't smoke a joint. So that's what's going on in my head right now is...
So are you open to a more modest approach to begin this? And then we keep discussing it?
Yeah. I think retail is definitely off the table for me. Absolutely. It's not...
Delivery?
Delivery's the hard part, you know? Because it's gonna come in. It's going to be here. Do we give people the legal avenue to get it where it's regulated? Or do we send the people out to the street corner? You know, do we send the people down to go get it illegally?
Yeah, but the same argument could be made for that, for the retail as well. You know, that same argument could be made, so...
Sure. But that comes down to citizen comfort. It's not having a business that you can walk into and walk out with drugs. They're drugs, so, yeah. A place where you... It is a drug.
So...
A lot of other things. But having a service where it's delivered to your house discreetly, I don't see an issue with the delivery. But I definitely, from tonight, see a big issue with the retail in town.
So my question would be is, let's say, we say no retail, but deliveries are okay. And then we run into a situation, of course, we're not Concord and all these other towns, where there is issues with... of course, we're not Concord and all these other towns, where there is issues with the delivery, how easy is it to say, "Okay, we're stopping delivery"?
Well, all of our permits are up for a yearly review. So if it doesn't work, within that year, we pull the permit.
Right, but see, if you're looking at it from that perspective, the guy who has the permit isn't the problem. Okay, because he's, he's doing the permit, he's delivering the thing, he's getting robbed. So he's not the problem. It's the people who are robbing him that's the problem. So how do you pull a permit from a guy that's following the rules? You can't do that, can you?
Well, it's becoming a public issue.
So then you're saying that deliveries are now a public nuisance and then we can pull the permit or something like that. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, that would be my thought.
Kevin?
Yeah, if you amended the ordinance later to take delivery out, then we wouldn't be renewing, you know, the annual permit to allow deliveries to continue.
So we can actually change the whole ordinance if it wasn't working, that would be the end of it, when the permit expires? But George is saying specifically, it's just one permit wasn't working? Is, that's what you're asking, right?
Well, I was thinking of delivery and somebody robbing them and causing, you know, police have to come out and do things and whatever.
And, you know, once again, I bring up, I bring up the idea of, you know, the taxi driver who would learn.
Right.
Delivery guys who get robbed in any other form of business. You don't pull a business license from a pizza place because their, their driver got held up. If it becomes like a regular, "All right, we're gonna knock over the weed van", you know, it becomes a regular occurrence, then maybe you pull the permit. But somebody gets robbed once, you know, you don't close down the liquor store. I mean, if you're treating it just like any other business, if a, if a store gets robbed once, you don't close down the store.
And then what about testing? Right now, we have testing all the way into professional office. Do you guys wanna leave that alone, or?
You know, there's been the luminous number of hours that were put on by the planning commission and hearings and stuff, and they've done tons of work on this. And the verbiage has been, has been crafted to fit almost every single situation that we can imagine. And they've done the due diligence on this. We're really have a sticking point. I think that testing and the cultivation, all this stuff, a lot of this stuff is probably borrowed from really good quality boilerplate or other people that have conferred on this. And I, and I think we have to give credit for the tons of hours and input that we've got, and we need to take some of this on faith. And, you know, these things can be edited and changed. I think that we just need to figure out if we're gonna get rid of delivery, because I think we all pretty much have consensus here legally that retail's off the table whether or not we're gonna do delivery. And the rest of the ordinance has been genuinely well crafted with every, you know, including the strikeouts and everything else has been very well done with lots of input from every avenue that we could get, and it's very well written. And to go through it, they were testing, cultivation, vapors, you know, I mean, they did their homework on this thing. And I don't foresee, everything that we've heard from the chief, you know, they had three years, they've been in business for 10 years, they didn't have a single incident. They had only one incident in Clearlake and they didn't get anything. Up in Arcata, they had five alarms in three years. And, you know, most businesses can get that many in a month, and they, they only had two burglaries and robberies, and I've had like 15 in the last month. So it's a small thing. It's not a crime way.
But you're fine with the testing?
Yeah, I'm fine with, with all of the other applications. As Tim said, that the big sticking point was the retail.
But the one area that also came to question I was at later on was the weight limit. Is that something that, that you said was top?
Well, if there's no retail, then there's no weight limit at all.
Oh, that's true.
Except, so just so I understand, are we saying no retail permits at all? Or are we saying retail permits, delivery only, are okay? Or are we saying, is that what we're saying? Because I'm getting lost, just so I know.
That's what we're trying to figure out now.
Okay. Well, because it sounded like maybe all retail permits were off the table and we would allow out of city delivery.
Well, I think they're just combining the words, so...
Yeah, so that's why I'm confused.
Can I ask the gentleman who owns the shop in the back of the question?
Yeah.
You were saying that you're cannabis user and the people who are buying plants
Yes, sir.
would come to the shop and the one plant in the pot would be five pounds and that's your, that's what you're allowed to have?
That's what your ordinance currently says, the way I read it.
As a delivery service, would you, is delivering whole plants something you would do to a cus, for a customer?
You know, to be quite honest, in the long run, yeah, you can deliver whole plants. But at the end of the day, I don't do delivery in Clearlake. People like to come to the store. They like experience. And they know how much pot they have. I want to maybe refer them to coming in and buying their medicine and doing their thing. Got a lot of people coming in there. Because they want a place of safe access. They want a place where they know that all that product is tested. It's gonna be not full of pesticides, which is everything is across the world. They want to make sure they're getting what they deserve. They want to know that they're getting the right product for their element, even though according to the...
What was your question, Tim?
Basically, if they deliver.
Yeah, you can do, you can.
So you can deliver plant?
We don't, but you can.
Okay.
But you can.
You can. So, but at the same time, I don't know if you guys realize under delivery, it's, everything needs to be locked in your trunk in the lockbox. You gotta have two delivery drivers. You need 360-degree cameras on your vehicle. You can't carry no more than $3,000 of the retail value, not wholesale value of products. So that can quickly add up very quickly. At the end of the day, I, yeah, I don't give too much of the wrong impression of retail overall, like entirely. But you can deliver plants. And that's where your patients, as a non-commercial anything, people with their arthritis need to go and get their cream, or they need their own medicine, they have to be able to go to retail. They have to get their plants for retail. They can't go to someone else's place to get their stuff, just so you know.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're saying no retail storefronts, but possibly retail delivery?
I think that's where we're at.
Okay. And Councilmember Barnes, you said yes to retail delivery? Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not in C2?
Not in C2.
Just industrial and C3.
Yeah, C2. C2 keeps it out of Clearlake Ave and 11th Street.
What, George? Retail delivery or no, not?
Well, I could see, I'm looking at this from a medical marijuana side, which I probably shouldn't be, but that, that delivery would help them out. You know, having someone deliver their stuff instead of them having to drive to Clearlake or wherever they have to go, so I could live with that. Looking at the medical part of it, yes.
Okay.
So let me refresh my memory. Didn't, didn't the original plan that you have had delivery but no retail?
Correct.
Okay, so that's...
It's considered a retail, like, delivery only.
Yeah, and so that's what you guys worked out since last January. You spent 12 months putting that together with the conjunction of the planning commission and all the input. Then I would, if you guys were comfortable with that and all the work that's been done and everybody else is amenable to that, I could see work. I could go along with that. At least it would give the medical people an outlet, safe, tested, properly maintained, locked, two drivers and so forth. I don't know about the $3,000 retail, but I guess we don't have any control over that.
Okay, so a point of clarification, are the proposed ordinance in front of us makes no distinction between medicinal or adult use?
Well, no, it doesn't, but I'm saying for the benefit.
I didn't want you to think, okay, we'll only allow medicinal, because we'd have to...
I'm just seeing it as
Just tell them they're feeling comfortable.
Access is what it comes down to.
And the other thing is, you know, enforcement of a delivery, like I said, you know, I mean, if they're getting it from Iqaya or whether they're getting it from Lakeport, it's still gonna be an unmarked van driving around, so the chief has very, would be very hard to be able to stop it.
Yeah. Creates, creates another way to do it illegally.
And no, they're not gonna have a little bell going off saying...
No Ice Cream Man music?
No song like an ice cream.
Good, good. Our ordinance says, "Delivery car shall have no signage and be unmarked." What's the difference between no signage and unmarked?
I think, sounds like a duplication, I mean.
Well, a marked can be like a symbol?
Yeah, but if it's a symbol in any way advertising what's going on, isn't that a, that signage?
Well, it could be a, it could literally be a red dot, could be their mark. And if that red dot is on all the cars, that's why it said a sign or a mark. Like Enterprise Rent-A-Car used to have bumper stickers and then all those people were getting carjacked. So they took that off and put a little tiny E. They were still getting carjacked, so they took it off.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, that's a sign or a mark.
I wasn't sure why it was...
You're welcome.
And no personal license place that say...
I call lead?
Budwagon.
If there is consensus to allow retail delivery only, then I would also recommend we remove the five-pound maximum limit of inventory and allow the retail licensee to determine it.
I would agree. Okay, so have we given staff enough direction to bring this back with revisions?
My only question would be in regards to limiting to delivery. Are we going back to what the working group had suggested, or are we looking simply at just amending the current language in front of you, but limiting that Section E that deals with retail to just delivery only? So we would kind of be keeping all the other requirements in place, or are we, or is the council wanting to see the previous, the previously written proposal that was made by the working group that spelled out just delivery only items?
I think we would want a lot of the new language.
I would think we want, we could keep what's in this ordinance. But what we would do is, we are amending Section E.
One, yeah.
This is a 5.3409E1 to only allow retailer delivery of cannabis, cannabis products or devices. And then I assume micro-business with retail, provided that retail is only delivery. And then the other points, which currently say retailer storefront, we would say that those are prohibited. And then otherwise, all the specific provision that right now apply to retailers would therefore only be applied to the delivery retail. And then, if I understand correctly,
Yeah, eliminating the five pound.
we are eliminating the five-pound limitation and will also be eliminating from the C2 zone
Correct.
any retail, which is, in a sense, retail delivery. But otherwise, I think we can, I think the ordinance is as good as it is. So just to clarify my understanding, then micro-businesses, which are those businesses that are allowed to do three of the four types of things, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and retail, that provided the retail, that that micro-business engagement was delivery only, that would fall under what I think you guys are contemplating at this point, is that right?
Right.
There are other specific provisions under retail that if there's no storefront, don't make as much sense to me. The 1,500 square foot maximum
Correct.
space and the no more than 50 feet, square feet, or 50 square feet of accessory product space. Those don't make any sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Although that would be a valid.
Are we still looking at limiting it?
Would that be something that they could deliver?
Well, they could, but there's no need to limit 50 square feet of accessory products.
It just doesn't apply.
Your whole store is inventory.
Is, is the council still looking at limiting it to retailers only?
This is not a retailer.
It's still considered retail, yes.
Just not a storefront. Point, betting that's gonna be really difficult.
Yeah, that's one thing you should, you should consider is that when you put a cap on it, there's going to be a burden to then implement a process by which we select which two.
Rule.
Right.
And also bear in mind that we're limiting to C3 and industrial
That kind of limited it.
and the 600-foot radius around parks and, and schools that deal with the...
It's pretty limited, so maybe we don't need to...
Yeah, it's too small.
Right. Well, but look at it that way. And then you'll have time to think about that.
So, the micro-businesses, are, those aren't, are those allowed in, in anything besides C3 and industrial?
Not currently.
That's what we're saying.
No, because micro-businesses can't do testing and only testing is allowed under the current ordinance in office, of professional office.
And C2?
Yes.
Our matrix says C2 is...
Right.
Just for testing?
Just for testing, yeah.
Yeah, I just, the number, when, when you have something like a lottery for like two spots, you know, whether it's a nursing, you know, opening at some college, it's, it could get kind of interesting when you're trying to do it based on criteria, who would do the selection if you only allowed two. But the fact that there's only C2, C3 and industrial down there, you know, I don't, I don't know that putting a limit of two, because it's only delivery now. We're not talking about retail storefronts, which was the big, I think, the big issue. So I, I don't know if that's a realistic number.
So we don't need it? We don't need a limit?
I don't think so.
I, I wouldn't think so.
I think the limit was because we didn't want 10 shops opening up.
Right.
So if we decide then that the amount that we get next year is way too many, how do we change that? Do we just not renew the permits and then put a cap? How are, I don't want to be arbitrary and I don't want 20 dispensaries.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm, what I'm thinking, is you can't.
Well, sorry. Yeah, that, that...
It gets more difficult. I mean, because you're, I mean, when you read through our standards, you know, you're required to submit annual performance plans and there is a review by staff to, to show that they're meeting all their standards. So if they're meeting all their standards and the real issue is just, there's a lot of them, I don't know. That's a little bit more difficult than, you know, there, you know, we've seen an increase in crime related to, you know, to this or that we can directly link to. I, I think that would probably get a little bit more difficult.
If we put a limit of two...
Then we increase the burden on staff and city council in making decisions that are not arbitrary.
If I, if I may add, what I've seen cities do, because there's a lot of cities that have had illegal marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries open and then they've been trying to curtail that. What they usually do is they say, is they pass an order saying, "Hey, no new permits shall be issued until the number of permits currently operating is four, two, or whatever." So that those who are existing, they will go away by attrition if there's simply not a market to handle them. But of course, if there is a market that can handle them, it is difficult to hold a permit if they're complying with the ordinance.
Well, what are we, what are we looking for with, I mean, obviously, we don't have any problem putting extra grocery stores right across the street or on the corner right next to another one. I don't see, if, if there's a crime problem or something like that, what would be the purpose of limiting, you know, successful businesses or fast food joints or anything like that? Anytime we start trading on, you know, free enterprise, I think we're in some...
That's why this is so backwards.
Yeah, so it, it seems to me that if they're viable, if they can get into C3 and they can get into industrial and they can open up and they can stay busy and they can do the business, okay. So what? But I, I don't know that you're gonna have that much room to fit that many and a number of them, set a finite number. I totally agree with Maureen on the staff issue, trying to select a, a number, whether it's two or four. I think that would be a really difficult situation. And there could be fallout on that too and discrimination. There's already discrimination on this whole subject as far as I'm concerned, so...
Okay. Is that everything, Kevin?
That's all I have on my list.
So, so we're eliminating the two, is what you're saying, right?
Did you hear you?
No, no, we're eliminating the two.
We are eliminating the cap.
The cap on, okay, delivery, on the delivery.
But we brought the zoning areas down to C3 and industrial.
No C3. Except for testing and this professional office and C2.
Unless you want to pull that back.
May, before we move on,
Yes.
I just, I would like, in order for us to ensure that we've got appropriate record for the making of this ordinance, I'd appreciate if I could maybe read back the changes that we discussed and then have one of you move to approve the reading of the ordinance based on that,
Okay.
on those changes. And then we will have to bring it back, obviously, because there's, these are substantive changes that require a second reading
Good.
in January, I guess, if that's okay. So, and Kevin, you can correct me if you've got something else here, but, so the ordinance as presented... the ordinance as presented is approved, provided there are change, the following changes. First, only retail with, only retail delivery shall be allowed, no storefront retail. We are removing the five pound limit on what these retailers can have at their location. We're eliminating the cap of two retailers. We are eliminating the fifty square foot, no, fifty feet of product space.
Square feet.
Square feet of product space, and the, and the, also, there's also a ten thousand foot.
Fifteen hundred square foot store area.
Fifteen hundred square foot store area. And we are also going to be prohibiting any of these delivery only retailers from C two.
All C two, yeah.
Is that it, Kevin?
That's all I have on my list.
Okay, so if I have a motion.
Did not, sorry, did you approve the five pound?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a second.
We have a motion?
Yeah.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That means that we're gonna also redo this in another meeting.
They're gonna see this again the next meeting, and it'll have these changes. And if he makes more substantive changes then, we'll have to come back one more time.
And we'll do a new public hearing, no?
Yes.
We actually need one public hearing for the document.
But it will be open to the public to speak. Okay, thanks, Kevin.
And I'd like to reiterate what Kenny said about the planning commission, they did a lot of work on this, they spent a lot of long hours on this, and I think they did a very good job of at least where we're at now.
Absolutely.
Could I just ask a question without going up there?
If you want to ask a question, you gotta come on up.
Go on, Sharon. This is the first meeting I've come to, and I don't really have very much information, but.
That's okay, what's your name?
My name is Sharon Lethem, and I was just finding this delivery thing yesterday first, I hadn't even thought of deliveries, but, so anybody can order cannabis?
No, you need to be 21 or older?
Well, yeah, anybody, but other than that, anybody can order it. And can you order it every day, twice a day, seven ounces a day?
As long as you, you're not over the maximum amount that the law allows.
And what is that?
I believe that's an ounce of.
Correct.
An ounce of dry marijuana.
An ounce of dry marijuana.
Seven grams of.
That's what you can have in your possession at any one time.
On your person?
You can have it anywhere, yes, it's legal. Yes, it's legal.
Can you then turn around and sell it to somebody?
No, no.
How are you gonna prevent that?
That's, I mean.
That's why we're having the mortgage.
It's, you may not prevent it, I mean, that's unknown, it would be, you know, first of all, we'd have to get a report that that was going on and then investigate it.
Well, I see a can of worms, but.
Thank you.
So that can of worms was actually created by the voters, wasn't it? Isn't that Alma Prop sixty-four? You can carry that amount?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move on to hazard mitigation grant. You guys want a break? Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break, hold you back. In the meeting, because the city attorney says we have worms. We need to get the show on the road. We are looking at a hazard mitigation grant program funding. Kevin?
Yeah, you stuck with me one more time here. Okay, so staff has met on several occasions with both representatives from Cal OES and FEMA, who have encouraged the city to apply for grant funds to put together a local hazards mitigation plan. Mitigation plans identify natural hazards and risks that can impact community based on historical experience, helps to estimate the potential frequency and magnitude of disasters, and assesses the risk to losses to life and property. At the end of this analysis, has kind of created a comprehensive set of mitigation-related strategies to try and address specifically kind of reoccurring issues that we see with natural hazards. Once completed, the city would be eligible for additional funding through Cal OES and FEMA to complete those identified projects. I think that's kind of the most exciting element of having a, having an approved hazards plan. And as such, the city has put together a grant application, and is requesting a maximum of $150,000 through the current hazards mitigation grant program to complete a mitigation plan. If awarded, the city would be responsible for a 25% match, which would equals a maximum of 30,000, 37,500. However, it's important to note that in-kind donations, which include staff time for preparation of plan, you know, rental meeting space, production of different materials for, for public releases, can all be included as in-kind donations against that match requirement. If after conducting this evening's public hearing, the city council wishes to move forward with the submission of this grant application, staff recommends the adoption of the attached resolution, and then direct staff to submit a notice of intent to Cal OES for funding.
All right. Have we ever seen anything like this before?
There, you know, the positive thing on this is it seems like FEMA in particular, we had a great meeting in this room, that included county and city, water districts, a number of different organizations throughout the city, they, recognizing the fact that it's cheaper to deal with prevention than it is to kind of come back and pick up all the pieces, that has been sort of our mantra. I mean, if you look at, you know, we have specific areas that we can all name that are reoccurring issues every time it floods, every time we have a certain type of disaster, we know those areas. Putting together this plan and making us eligible for funds to kind of look at correcting those problems, I think ultimately is gonna be a really good thing.
Sure. Any questions? Anyone from the public? If not, we take final comment or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the City of Lakeport's Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program, HMGB, grant application for the creation of a local hazards mitigation plan, and direct staff to submit a notice of intent to Cal OES.
Certainly.
You know what, I need to back up, is this a public hearing?
Yes.
So I'm gonna back up for a second and actually open the public hearing, and if there's anyone from the public, if not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
I thought you were gonna make me draw anything.
Just had a backup for a second. Well, because the next item is council business. Unaudited actual report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. What's in front of you tonight is basically just an update on the sixteen seventeen fiscal year and the finances, just as an update, the account balances have been submitted to the auditor, and fieldwork has been completed, we are currently in the process of preparing the CAFR, which sometimes results in some, some adjustments for financial statements purposes. So we decided to provide some information as an update, as a, to the status of the revenues and expenditures that would precede a mid-year budget review that is scheduled for January. So attached are some financial statements for the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. The presentation of the statements is, should be familiar, it's the same presentation used in the, in the budgets and in mid-year reports. The, there is one change to how this information is presented, and that's the section below the surplus deficit line. It just quickly to explain that a little bit. In accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, there's two methods of accounting for which these different types of funds are presented. The enterprise funds are presented on like a full accrual type basis, which is very similar to like corporate or for-profit businesses, to where the general fund is presented on a modified accrual type of accounting, which is, is a little bit different. It focuses, the, the enterprise fund financial statements are presented on a flow of economic resources method, which reports all assets and all liabilities where they're current, long-term. The general fund financial statements present balances using current financial resources measurement focus, which emphasizes the current available spending, resources available for appropriation. And so the purpose of this section was to just kind of reconcile those two, so that both types of funds present the same information. And so, and it also includes the audited number that kind of reconciles to the previous year's audited beginning balance, just so there's that assurance in the statements. And so, as you'll see in the statements, first on the general fund, the final budget had a deficit of 109,000 that was essentially removed in the unaudited actuals, we're calling them, to 256,494, most of which was from Measure Z sales tax revenue that was earned in the fourth quarter of sixteen seventeen that had not been budgeted. That amount was 350,118 dollars.
So the bottom line is, are, we still had a net after everything of 256,494, and so at mid-year, Nick's gonna be bringing that back with how you want that.
Where we're spreading that surplus around, okay.
Correct, yeah, I mean, the idea was to give you the information now, so that when we come back at mid-year with any potential new projects, you guys will have this information previously to, to make decisions on, on which projects we bring back, or will receive direction from you guys tonight on any additional projects you wish to see.
So is the surplus just from increased revenues, or is it from, we didn't spend as much, too? Is it a combination?
It's a, it's a combination of both, I mean, you can see on the expenditures line, we saved $60,000 in salaries and benefits, $80,000 in operations, and we spent a little bit more in debt service than what was budgeted.
So it's a combination of extra revenues and?
It's a combination of extra revenue, but, but in the report, I mean, what it pans out to, I mean, we, then we had decreases in other types of revenues, too, so, I mean, what it pans out to is that there's really this 350,000 dollars that wasn't budgeted, that kind of eliminated that deficit and gave us this surplus.
Okay.
So I think you'll also see a full report of everything that we've increased the budget by, things that came up that we weren't expecting that you've been approving, so you'll have an accounting of all that, and then with this additional surplus, and then what's left, you can make some decisions on if you want any additional spending, or do you want to put it in the reserves?
Set aside.
For next year. Next, we bring that back in January to discuss.
You have any questions?
Yes, does the Measure Z Oversight Committee have any input, since some of this is from Measure Z revenue?
We haven't met with Measures, no, we haven't discussed that fourth quarter earnings with Measure Z yet. We stepped up the approach that we would bring it to the city council first, and then taking your recommendations that, that the council or staff had for increasing expenditures in Measure Z, we would take that to them for their blessing.
And Measure Z is more about making sure we spend the money correctly, council's always the one that sets the spending, the priorities and how you want it spent, and then Measure Z gives the blessings to it, that, you know, this does.
It's why they're oversight.
Yes, so this does need the Measure Z.
And just really quickly to go through the, the water fund, the water, the water operating maintenance fund had a final budget deficit of almost 400,000, which was reduced to, to just under 200,000, and that's due primarily, almost completely, to a reduction in sergeant benefits and operation spending. And the sewer fund. The sewer fund had, the, the final budget was, had a budgeted surplus of 461,000, which was reduced to 202, but you'll see on the use of fund balance line, that had all, that had been eliminated completely. And so, the use of fund balance line was a previously used method of budgeting to, to create a revenue basically out of fund balance, that it wasn't showing, it was just, it was a line that would show what was budgeted to be spent out of, out of fund balance. And so we didn't spend out of fund balance, so that's actually like a 700,000 dollar benefit to what's available for appropriations in the sewer fund.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Anyone from the public? Okay, so you don't need any action?
No, we're just looking for any direction, if any. If none, that's fine, too, we'll be back talking about mid-year in January.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we just wanted to give you an update as to what the year-end balances were for sixteen seventeen, takes a while to get everything closed and audited, and so.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Welcome.
And next we have a report regarding the taking the email server at the city, Margaret.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to be the, to our finance director, who is also our IT person, and he's been working with Polestar, so I'll go with him.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, so we've been struggling with the, the city has multiple servers, we have like a file sharing server, which we share at the corporation yard, so they're able to access files, but then all city employees' emails are housed on this exchange server. I believe the exchange server was last, was put into place in 2005, and we've been struggling with it for a while.
I don't know why.
Well, it's old. And so our, our IT consultant has been required to spend many hours doing whatever he does to make email go from one person to another person on the server, and so last week, while I was out of town, actually, there was a major catastrophe, and it, he took, it took him several hours, days to get it to a place where it was functioning properly. And so we used that contract IT consultant, Polestar Computers, to provide us with a couple of different quotes on server providers, and it appears that the server that we, we would like to get, which is oriented directly to Dell, is the cheapest option at 12,519.29, and that would include the server and the 55 Microsoft Exchange email users. And according to, according to Jeff, it would be completely sufficient, and would last another seven to 10 years.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
I gotta give credit to our IT, to Polestar, I mean, he's band-aided and.
Yeah.
Try to keep this going as long as possible, but when we're down for two and a half days, it's, it's really bad, it really affects business.
And so the staff report doesn't talk about the fiscal impact, but this is not a budgeted item, this would be a budget adjustment, shouldn't be approved.
Good thing we have surplus.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, Ingram Micro didn't know Kevin was in town.
Our family is very upset that we do not have any relation.
Our family is very upset that we do not have any relation back.
So the Dell system, is that going to have a terabyte drive, or is it going to have 300 gig?
I believe it's 300 gig.
But everybody else is a terabyte.
Well, don't quote me on that, George.
So are you saying we're not comparing apples to apples?
Well, I'm just saying, 300 gig and a terabyte, that's a lot of difference in space, and space is cheap. I mean, you can buy, you can buy a five-terabyte drive.
Which part, which quarter are you looking at?
Well, I was looking at the one, the second one, I think, it says 300 gig.
Where do you see the space on Quote 1?
Okay, on Quote 1, let's go back.
You were supposed to be comparing apples to apples.
It says hard drives on Quote 1, your first page, it says 1 terabyte, 7.2 k RPM.
I'm looking like...
Page 1 of the first one.
That's the Dell.
Processor, turn around. He's looking at Polestar one.
The Polestar one shows 1 terabyte.
No, the page number 1 is actually Dell. It just comes from Polestar's email. Polestar, Quote 3.
All quotes come from the Polestar email.
That's the Dell one.
Yeah.
That's one of the bigger ones.
Where do you, on which?
Where do you see the terabytes?
Yeah.
Of course, the Polestar has 1 terabyte as well. Quote 3 and Quote 1 both have a terabyte.
Says hard drive.
One terabyte.
Terabyte. We're looking at hard drive capacity.
So Quote 1 Dell is the quote we are suggesting we go with, so that would be a terabyte.
So Quote 2, Quote 2 is the one that says the hard drive is 300 gig.
Yeah. That's Ingram Micro. We'll have Kevin talk to them.
And if we want to go with a terabyte drive, that's a lot better than 300 gig.
Correct.
This first one is for 41 terabyte drive, isn't it? It's got the 4 bracketed next to it, so that tells me that it's 41 terabyte, 7.2 k RPM.
That's a possibility, too.
So we talked to Jeff from Polestar, we just want to make sure that the lowest bid includes the same amount of memory?
Storage.
Storage, excuse me, yeah.
There's a difference.
Oh, okay.
Memory is how fast your machine is going to run.
Yes.
Storage is how much you can go on.
Ah, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Margaret.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I seen the one that said 300 gig, I'm thinking that's... This has 2 terabytes on it. Okay? 300 gig.
Yes.
So would you still be going with the Dell? Still has the best?
Yes.
Still the best? Okay.
Yeah, no, that's not going to upset the IT person who works for Polestar.
No, he's the one that got these bids for us, so it's...
Any other questions?
He's just tired of working late hours trying to piece this together every day.
Put it back together. Anyone from the public? If not, we'll take a motion. So...
I move we approve the proposal for, or I move we approve the replacement of the email server at City Hall, a warning to Dell in the total amount not to exceed $12,519.29.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And next, we have replace the HVAC unit at 916 North Forbes. Margaret?
Well, I'm going to leave that one to Doug too. He's like did all the research on it. I just sent the staff over to you. He did all the work.
How do I hear that buzz going bump, bump?
You can handle it, Doug. We haven't heard from you all night.
I thought you would consider that a blessing.
No.
Madam Mayor, Council members, what you have before you is one of the HVAC units on top of the old police department, which we currently have rented out, has died. And because of the age of the unit, repairing it really is not an option. We have as much money in repairing it as replacing it. We solicited for three bids from three local suppliers. We received two back. The third one, we did make numerous phone calls, requesting them to please submit us a quote, and we never received it. So from the two quotes we received, the cheapest is for Economy, for $4,100. And staff's recommendation is council approval for that, so that we can get that unit installed.
Any questions? Anyone from the public?
Is that propane or gas? Electric?
It's electric.
Yes.
Anything else?
So is that heating and air, I would imagine?
Yes, yes, that's what, H-BAC.
Right, because I'm just saying, tactical heat pump equipment. I was just wondering.
Right.
No other questions or comments? We'll take a motion.
I move to approve the HVAC unit replacement at 916 North Forbes, awarding bid to Economy Heating and Cooling in an amount not to exceed $4,100.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution declaring City employee holiday. Margaret?
Sure. Madam Mayor, in the spirit of negotiations that have been going on with staff, Council We're asking Council to consider December 27th as a paid holiday, since it's the only day of the week City Hall is open, the week between Christmas and New Year's. And so, I believe, I believe you have to read the resolution clearly, since it wasn't available to the public previously. They, our Labor attorney asked that the mayor read the resolution in public.
I'd be delighted.
Thank you.
So we have a resolution of City Council of the City of Lakeport, designating December 27, 2017, as a paid holiday for the Lakeport Employees Association Unrepresented Employees and Management and Confidential Unit. Whereas, the City of Lakeport has entered into labor negotiations with the Lakeport Employees Association and Management and Confidential Unit. And whereas, the City of Lakeport and the Lakeport Employees Association and Management and Confidential Unit have as of yet been able to reach an agreement. And whereas, the unrepresented employees are not currently in negotiations, but historically receive the same negotiated benefits of the Lakeport Employees Association and Management and Confidential Unit. And whereas, the City of Lakeport finds that it is in the public interest and promotes employee morale to reward the Lakeport Employees Association Unrepresented and Management and Confidential Unit employees for their dedication and hard work by designating a full-day paid holiday on December 27, 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate December 27, 2017, as a full-day paid holiday for all Lakeport Employees Association Unrepresented and Management and Confidential employees. Duly passed and adopted this 19th day of December 2017 by City Council of the City of Lakeport by the following vote. Any questions? Comments? Anyone from the public? Okay, not take a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution declaring the City employee holiday on December 27, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have our City Council reorganization. The Council is asked to hold its annual reorganization meeting. And before I give it over to Hillary, I just want to say that it has been an absolute pleasure serving as the mayor this year, and that there's just no greater honor than saying that you're the mayor of the City of Lakeport. I'm so proud of the city, I'm so proud of our council, and thank you for having me. And we've gotten a lot done, and I would call it another year being busy and getting a lot done. So Hillary, do you want to open that up?
Okay. Madam Mayor and Council, we're holding the annual reorganization meeting, and that will include the election of mayor and mayor for attempt for the next year. So I'll start by taking nominations for mayor.
I nominate Maria Turner as mayor, second. I'm second anyway.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Awesome. Congratulations, Mayor.
Now you get to do a little microphone.
And you can keep your book.
Yeah, really.
Okay, and now for, I'll take nominations for mayor for attempt.
I'll nominate Tim Barnes if he has the time.
Accepted.
All those in favor?
It's the second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
It's super cool. James?
You want to pass the gavel?
But, you should move up here.
You just don't like that.
I think all we have left is announcements, council announcements. I like what Stacy instituted last year, starting with staff, so we'll continue that.
I have no additional comments tonight, thank you.
David?
No report.
Merry Christmas, one and all.
I just want to say thank you to the council. I was able to attend the municipal finances to put on my other League of Cities down in Newport Beach last week, and that was the first time I'd been to something like that with the League of Cities, and it was very informative, I was able to meet a lot of people. A lot of cities have the same problems as the City of Lakeport on larger scales, smaller scales, and so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for going. It's helpful to have staff that invests their time.
Chief?
Yes, as council's aware, I've been doing research on surveillance camera systems for both library parking downtown, and I'm at a point where I feel that I need more staff input. I want some involvement from the City Council as we further research this before I bring anything back formally, so I would ask that the mayor give us a council member or two to be on a working group to do some more research on this, and go over some of the issues and complexities. And if that's, if that's okay, then sometime after the first of the year, I would set up a date and time with those representatives, as well as numerous of the city departments that are going to have, need to be consulted as well.
I'd like to do that, I've been working on this for a couple of years.
And I'll also, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Christmas, oh, Christmas? Kevin?
You've heard enough from me this evening, but I'll leave it with a Merry Christmas as well to everybody and your families as well.
Hillary, anything for tonight? I have nothing other than Merry Christmas to the families. Councilwoman Barnes? Over here.
Who do you want?
I will get the hang of this. Take a walk.
Now I wish everybody a glorious Christmas. It's not everybody gets a Merry Christmas already, so glorious Christmas.
Well, we're going, Rotary Club will be giving away 450 Christmas baskets, and Dean and I will be opening up the Fairgrounds about 5:30 in the morning, tomorrow morning, start giving those away. And I want to thank LFRC for consolidating and collecting and collating and putting together the 23 pages of different people that signed up. They did a lot of work, and a lot of different organizations helped, Bruno's and the Fairgrounds, McDonald's, they all, and the record beat, putting it in there every day to try and raise money to help out 450 families have a better Christmas, I'm not wrong.
It's amazing. I would invite any council member to come down and see the operation. I don't have to be there till 7:30, so that's great.
If you want to come down at 7, it's crazy.
It's an amazing operation.
Amazing assembly line that's so incredibly fast and efficient. That we actually moved up the giveaway time an hour to eight, because, shoot, we were staying around because we got it done so fast. And it's about between 500 and 600 cases that are all lined up and boxed up and ready to roll. Amazing. And also, Lakeport disposal brought down a trash can, and, oh, and Scully Packing brought down the boxes. And nothing else.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKee?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor for attempt.
Wow. It's scary, right?
I want to thank the staff for everything they've done over the past year. You guys have been incredible. And I really mean that. Everybody fits where they're supposed to be. You guys have done a great job. You know, I really can't say too much more about that without drawing it out and it becoming insincere, as well as the council, sitting on here, learning from you, getting to participate, and having to deal with some really hard subjects over the past year, the flood, and then, you know, our cannabis ordinances. But I feel like it's been well thought out, and I feel like we're sitting up here and we're doing something that can make the people who elected us proud, as we try to go forward and represent everybody. That's really all I have. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. So just before I close, I wanted to thank a group that doesn't usually get a lot of public recognition, and that's our media, that makes a point to be here at every meeting. And I can only talk to so many people at Safeway, so I know that if word gets out about what's going on in Lakeport, it's in a large part because of you, the time that you spend and the time that you take to cover what we do and proclaim it to the public. So I just wanted to give you some sincere thanks for the year that you've done. It's been helpful.
Madam Mayor, before you close, there's a group in the back. Do you, do you know who they are?
They're kind of far, my eyes are always, but I believe that is my eldest, my daughter Soraya, and my son Hayden.
Thanks for having us.
With that, I will close the meeting. Thank you.